Before moving to consider the items on today's agenda, may I remind those present that this meeting is being recorded in accordance with the City Corporation's filming and recording protocol. The Chief Commissar.
My Lord Mayor, it is with the greatest pleasure that I move that one of our own Deputy Keith Bottomley, one of the Sheriffs of the City of London, be invited to take his seat on the dais with the alderman.
Thank you, Chief. The Chairman of the Finance Committee.
My Lord Mayor, I'm very happy to second the motion, thank you.
The motion members is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. The Assistant Remembrancer to escort Sheriff and Deputy Bottomley onto the dais, please. Moving then to Item 1, the names of those members who have presented apologies for today's meeting have been recorded. At Item 2, does any Honourable Member have any additional interests to declare in respect of the items to be considered? Seeing none, turning to Item 3, on page 7. The question is that the minutes of the last court are correctly recorded. That is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. Item 4 is to elect a Chief Commissar for 2026/2027. Two candidates, Charles Edward Lord and Philip Woodhouse, have been validly nominated. A ballot in respect of this appointment is therefore necessary. A blue-coloured ballot paper with regard to this election is in the hands of all Honourable Members. Would Honourable Members kindly proceed to vote using only this blue paper? Members are instructed to keep hold of their pink ballot papers pertaining to the Housing Governance Working Party. These counts will be conducted separately. So please do not submit your pink ballots at this time, blue ballots only, please. Thank you. Thank you. If so, the Lord Mayor appoints the Chief Commissar and the Deputy Chairman of the Finance Committee to be the scrutineers and declares the ballot to be closed. Would it be the pleasure of the Court that the votes for the election of the Chief Commissar be counted immediately and the result announced to the Court once it is available? That is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. Whilst the ballots are being counted, the Lord Mayor has directed that we proceed with the Court's business and the result will be announced when available. At Item 5, Deputy Caroline Haynes will now read informally the terms of a vote of thanks to the Right Honourable the Lord Mayor. While the motion will be put formally at your December meeting, it is being read today to afford the Lord Mayor the opportunity to hear the terms and respond. Deputy Caroline Haynes.
As the town clerk has just informed the Court, today it falls to me as Ward Deputy of Queen Hythe to present the terms of the draft vote of thanks for our outgoing Lord Mayor. The vote of thanks will be formally moved, seconded and voted upon at the next meeting in December. I therefore intend to move in December that the Members of this Court take great pleasure in expressing to the Right Honourable Lord Mayor, Alastair John Nesbit King, D.L., their gratitude and appreciation for the distinguished manner in which he has served as Lord Mayor of the City of London during this past year. His mayoral theme, Growth Unleashed, has focused on driving growth by celebrating the successes and diverse communities within the Square Mile, encouraging the adoption of technologies that provide London with a competitive advantage and challenging industry to maximise opportunities through responsible risk-taking. Alastair has achieved particular success through his tireless work to transform the UK's pension investment culture, championing a value-for-money approach that prioritises long-term returns for savers. Through the Mansion House Accord, an extra £50 billion of investment for UK businesses and major infrastructure projects is set to be unlocked and his corresponding success through the Employer Pension Pledge, signed by the Chancellor in July, commits over 20 of the UK's largest employers to a pledge to prioritise retirement outcomes for their workforce rather than focusing solely on cost reduction when selecting or reviewing pension providers. Throughout the year of office, the Lord Mayor undertook an extensive programme of international visits, travelling to over 20 countries by November and maintaining enthusiasm and good humour throughout, including visits to Australia, India, China, North America, Japan, the Gulf and South East Asia. Notable highlights include hosting visiting dignitaries and officials such as the state visit by the President of the French Republic in July, celebrating ties between the UK and France and encouraging stronger collaboration on financial services and hosting the Emira Qatar at Mansion House during his state visit. Perhaps unsurprisingly, given his Scottish heritage, Alastair also made promoting investment into Scotland a personal priority, including through his co-hosting of Scotland's Global Investment Summit with Scottish Financial Enterprise in October, supported by both the UK and Scottish governments. And the Lord Mayor also demonstrated strong support for the Defence Sector and Armed Forces by leading a series of breakfast roundtables on funding the UK defence supply chain with financial professional services firms. In thanking Alastair, his colleagues on this Court also wished to express their gratitude to Florence the Lady Merres for her enthusiastic support throughout the year, particularly through her championing of the Armed Forces Covenant. We also record our thanks to Corinne Lee, who has often acted as representative Lady Merres during the year. In taking leave of Alastair, their 696th Lord Mayor, Members unite in thanking Alastair for all that has been accomplished in his year and send best wishes to him and Florence for their future good health and happiness. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you to the Ward Deputy for so kindly saying those words. It's been an incredible privilege to have served as the 696th Lord Mayor of London. My thanks go to you all for the support that you have so kindly given me, the Lady Merres and the representative Lady Merres during the course of this remarkable year. I also want to thank you all for the support you've given to the Growth Unleashed theme. It's been a call to make sure that the City is bolder, it thinks smarter and takes off the handbrake. We want to reignite the City's appetite for responsible risk-taking, seizing our national edge in innovation and to embrace the Square Mile's many communities in order to drive growth. I could not be more grateful though to you, to the Sheriffs, to the Lady Merres, to the representative Lady Merres who stepped in for the Lady Merres when Lady Merres was serving with the military and for the hard-working officers across the Corporation. It has been a momentous year. I do think we have made some incredible strides to change the United Kingdom's pension system and the culture through the Mansion House Accord. It's been an enormous privilege to be associated with a programme that in totality should be valued in excess of £100 billion, £50 billion of that going into the United Kingdom. I'm also deeply proud of the work we've done in relation to the Employer Pension Pledge and also on the education plan for people in the pension fund industry. It was also an immense privilege to host this week's Global Investment Summit in Scotland, which was, I think, a real triumph. Wonderful to work with the United Kingdom's Government plus also the Scottish Government to bring investors from around the world to see what's going on in Scotland. And it underlines the fact that the mayoralty has a nationwide role, not just for London and the South East. I'm also deeply proud of the City belonging networks that have launched during the course of the year. We now have 10 networks dedicated to supporting various communities across the city, drawing people closer in an increasingly divided world. I'm proud also of the work we've done in relation to the Chief Risk Officer Networks and also the report that we did for our regulators entitled Regulating for Growth. Remarkably, we made 10 recommendations, six of which have already been implemented by the regulators. I'm also proud of the work that we have done in relation to Defence, which is something I did so often in collaboration with the Lady Merres. I said at the start of my tenure that this would be a high-energy mayoralty and that I would be the cheerleader-in-chief for the United Kingdom's financial professional services sector plus also legal and maritime sectors as well. We want to remind the world and the Square Mile that the City is the remarkable place to do business. And effectively, I've had a mantra to say to the world that if you want to ensure against catastrophe, do it in London. If you want to raise debt or raise equity, do it in London. If you want to fall out with your partners, sue them in London. I want to thank particularly the new Sheriffs, Alderman Hughes Penny and also Deputy Keith Bottomley. I also want to wish Lady Mayor-elect Sue Langley the very best as she takes on her new role next month. It's been an enormous honour to serve you all. Thank you.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. At Item 6, I have here a letter of the Lady Mayor-elect to lay before the Court declaring her assent to take upon herself that office. That letter is to receive. At Item 7, the Right Honourable the Lord Mayor to report on his recent engagements.
Much has happened since we were last in this room. So my final mayoral update will be a bumper one. In the third week of September, we hosted the then Science and Innovation and Technology Secretary, Peter Kyle, for the annual Innovation and Technology Dinner. I set out how Growth Unleashed, my theme for the year, encourages British firms to embrace the white heat of the new technology and to gain a competitive advantage. It's been wonderful to see so many really impressive British innovative businesses go through the processes of the Scale Up Capital events and a number of other of our programmes to try and get further funding into those remarkable businesses. In early September, I had a very productive visit to China, to Singapore, Japan and also to Vietnam. In Tokyo, I signed a refreshed memorandum of understanding between the City of London Corporation and the Tokyo Metropolitan Government, building on the successes that we've had since signing the first memorandum in 2017. In Vietnam, I spoke at a key conference on how the City can support the creation of an international financial centre in Ho Chi Minh City and also one in Da Nang. It was also wonderful to sign a further MOU between the City St George's University of London and British University of Vietnam and to see what's been going on in that further collaboration. On the 17th of September, I had the honour of representing the City of London at the State Banquet hosted by Their Majesties, the King and Queen, in honour of the President of the United States at Windsor Castle. City Giving Day on the 23rd of September was a fantastic display of philanthropy and it went really, really well, with over 600 companies participating, more than ever before. On the 25th of September, we brought leading family offices, wealth managers and investors from around the world to discuss the future of private capital here in the United Kingdom in the inaugural Global Family Office Summit at Mansion House. It was a immense pleasure to welcome our new Sheriffs on the 26th of September and my successor Dame Sue Langley, who was formally elected the following Monday. It was also a great joy just last week to enter a boxing ring and to do some training and a bit of sparring with Lennox Lewis. Not something I thought I would be saying during the course of a review of my year, but goodness me, it was great fun. He's still nursing his wounds, as you can probably guess. I did go easy on him. It's been really wonderful also to be able to persuade a number of the, just earlier this week, some of the big investors from around the world to come to Scotland and to see the extraordinary opportunities there and to underline the national role that we have here in the City of London. And it was wonderful to work with Scottish Financial Enterprise in that capacity. Last week, to coincide with Black History Month, we launched our 10th City Belonging Network, Black in the Square Mile, at a joyous event here at Guildhall. Now, there are still some exciting things to do over the course of the next few weeks. Next week, I will be attending the Regional Investment Summit in Birmingham with the Chancellor. I will look forward to welcoming the Secretary of State to Defence at the annual Defence and Security Lecture coming up. It'll also be a great pleasure to welcome the regulators to Mansion House for the annual City Dinner. Before, I will then take off on my final visit to the Gulf and also to Indonesia to finish off my overseas programme. And we'll end up the mayoralty on a high with the Lord Mayor's appeal grand finale, the Lord Mayor's last live laugh taking place in this very Guildhall on the 5th of November and starring Alexander Armstrong. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Under Item 8, in the absence of the Policy Chairman, we have the Deputy Chairman of Policy and Resources, after which we will be able to announce the results of the Chief Commissar ballot. Deputy.
My Lord Mayor, the Policy Chairman has asked me to provide a short policy statement on his behalf. I don't think the pun was intended. He sends his apologies that he is unable to be here for this meeting of your Honourable Court as he is representing the City as part of the Prime Minister's trade mission to India this week. Members will know that India is a priority market for the City Corporation and the Government in terms of bilateral trade and cooperation. Our participation in the mission demonstrates that we continue to be a partner of choice for His Majesty's Government in pursuit of economic growth. Members will have received an email from the Policy Chairman last week regarding September's City Question Time. At that event, a former member who is not a resident was allowed to attend and thus take part by asking a question of the member panel. As the Policy Chairman noted in his message to Members, that individual should not have been allowed to attend or speak and comments were not acceptable. The Policy Chairman has apologised on behalf of the City Corporation to the Members in question and has instructed officers to review how attendance is managed and to ensure that such an incident is not repeated. We are committed to ensuring that the focus of City Question Time is for residents to question senior leaders, raise concerns and share their experiences of living in the City, helping us to strive towards delivering exceptional services. Along with other Honourable Members, the Policy Chairman was pleased to attend the Labour Party Conference in Liverpool last week and the Conservative and Liberal Democrat Party Conferences in Manchester and Bournemouth. At the Labour Party Conference, we were delighted to welcome Prime Minister's Special Advisor on Business and Investment, Baron Chandra, as the guest speaker at our City of London dinner on Monday evening. In off-the-record Q&A at the dinner, Mr Chandra emphasised the importance of competitiveness, entrepreneurship and growth. We also extend our thanks to Sir James Cleverly MP and Daisy Cooper MP for their contributions to successful City of London Corporation events at the other party conferences. I would also like to welcome at today's Honourable Court visitors from the diplomatic spouses who are observing today's meeting. I'd like to welcome them all to Guildhall today. We value your visit and the spirit of international friendship and understanding you represent, principles that resonate strongly with the City's long tradition of global connection and civic service. Finally, I wish to extend my sincere thanks to the Lord Mayor for an outstanding mayoral year. Your advocacy for the Mansion House Accord and your promotion of City belonging networks, amongst many other things, leave a lasting legacy on this great City. Every Member knows your passion for boxing, so it is no surprise that your theme, Growth Unleashed, will continue to ensure the Square Mile punches above its weight nationally and internationally long after your grand finale and you step out of the ring. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. Now turning to the matter of the election of the Chief Commissar for next year. Can the result please be brought to the dais, please? Members, the results of the ballot are as follow. Charles Edward Lord, 39 votes. Philip Woodhouse, 57 votes. Two votes spoilt. The Lord Mayor therefore declares Mr Philip Woodhouse to be elected to the Chief Commissar for 2026/2027. The Chief Commissar, Deputy Henry Pollard.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I would just like to congratulate both candidates for taking part. It's important that we have a broad section of Commissars coming forward to stand for this important role. And my congratulations to Philip Woodhouse. Look forward to working with you in the six months ahead. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. The Chief Commissar-elect to address the Court briefly. Thank you.
I promise, my Lord Mayor, I promise I'll be brief. Many of you may know that Henry and I worked together when we were in our early twenties. So I look forward to yet again gaining the wisdom from the current Chief Commissar. My commiserations, Edward, a very polite and well-managed election campaign. Good luck in whatever happens next, maybe the Guildhall Club. I'm very, I think everybody knows, you saw my pledges. I value tradition, I value the importance of making a difference and I hope the faith that you as a Court have put in me will be repaid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Woodhouse. Moving to Item 9, this concerns the vacancies on several committees and outside bodies to be appointed to. The nominations received are set out on page 3 of your agenda. Whilst a ballot will not, will be required in respect of 9B, the Lord Mayor has requested that we first address the vacancies for which there is no ballot, no contest. Accordingly, the Lord Mayor declares Members to be appointed as set out at Items 9A and 9C. A ballot will now be required in respect of the appointments to be made under Item 9B pertaining to the Housing Governance Working Party. The pink ballot papers with regard to these vacancies should be in the hands of Honourable Members. Instructions on how to vote can be found on the ballot paper. Once complete, ballot papers should be placed in the ballot boxes in the hands of the Court attendants. Would Honourable Members kindly proceed to vote? Thank you. So the Lord Mayor appoints the Chief Commissar and the Chairman of the Finance Committee, or their representatives, to be the scrutineers and declares the ballot to be closed. Would it be the pleasure of the Court that the votes be counted at the conclusion of the Court with the results being printed in the summons for the next meeting? We shall also post the results on the notice board in the Members' Reading Room and circulate a copy to all Members by email as soon as they are available. Members, that is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. At Item 10, we have three reports of your Policy and Resources Committee. First, Item 10A, on page 31, we have a report concerning an update to the officer scheme of delegations. Does any Honourable Member wish to discuss the item? Seeing none, the report before you is to agree, Members? On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the report to be carried. Second then, Item 10B, on page 47, we have a report concerning an update to investment property governance. Does any Member wish to discuss this item? Again, seeing none, this report, Members, is before you to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the report to be carried. And finally, Item 10C, on page 51, we have the annual report of the Panel of Independent Persons and this is to receive. At Item 11, on page 61, is a report of your Finance Committee concerning central London forward. Does any Honourable Member wish to discuss this item? Seeing none, the report before you is to agree. And on the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the report to be carried. Item 12, on page 67, presents the list of applicants for the Freedom. The motion is that the several persons named be admitted to the Freedom accordingly, to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. At Item 13, there are four motions, the first three of which relate to appointments to Ward Committees. Firstly, at 13A is a motion in the name of Firstly, at thirteen A is a motion in the name of Deputy Anne Holmes proposing that Matthew Bell be appointed to the Culture, Heritage and Libraries Committee for the Ward of Farnham Within, in the room of Florence Keelson Anfield, the Chief Commissar, to second the motion.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Chief. That is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. Next, at item thirteen B is a motion in the name of Deputy John Edwards proposing that David Williams be appointed to the Planning and Transportation Committee for the Ward of Farnham Within, in the room of Matthew Bell, the Chief Commissar, to second.
I second the motion.
That is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. And at item thirteen C is a motion in the name of Deputy Henry Colthurst, that the Ward of Lime Street twin its representation on Planning and Transportation Committee with the Ward of Langbourne, in lieu of the representation of Anthony Fitzpatrick, who is stepping down from the committee for the third and final time in this series, Chief Commissar.
I second the motion.
That then is to agree. And on the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. Turning then to item thirteen D, a motion by Ms Leila Bolton, as set out on page seventy-three, concerning rolling registration. Ms Bolton to open the debate. Thank you.
My Lord Mayor, I'd like to start by thanking honourable members for their welcome and for sharing their wisdom with a newcomer. When I first stood for election in December, one of my very first questions was to ask why the city updated its voter lists only once a year. This practice, abandoned by the rest of the UK years ago, means that at any one time, some constituents are disenfranchised, while others can vote in a ward months after leaving it. Rolling registration, replied the officer, would bring us up to date with the rest of the country, but that would require parliamentary time. And there the conversation ended, as if this could never change. When I was elected in March in the Business Ward of Bassashaw, I pledged to work for better governance and greater voter participation. Both aims, which many in this Court share, would be furthered by having an accurate picture of who our electors are at any given moment. It would also cut the bureaucratic burden we impose on the very businesses, charities, and residents we mean to help. That's why I'm asking honourable members to support the introduction of rolling registration to the City of London. This would allow busy employers to support, to add and subtract electors as and when needed in an increasingly mobile city. If nothing needed changing, no action would be required, and businesses I've spoken to would be more willing to engage if we made it easier for them to do so. For their part, city residents would no longer have to register every year to take part in city elections when they face no such requirement for parliamentary or London polls. And it's not just me saying this. Rolling registration was top of electoral services wishlist in a 2024 report to Policy and Resources. Colleagues may ask, why bring this motion now, when the Policy Chair only last month promised us not one but two reviews, one on ward boundaries and another on franchise reform that would cover this topic? The answer is simple. It's precisely so this Court can state its view loud and clear on a basic democratic reform that's been raised by a number of honourable members before me. As many of you know better than I, reviews can look at many things and kick anything into some very long grass. Unless we make our priorities clear, this change risks being lost in that grass. I'm not saying rolling registration should be the only reform we request from Westminster. What I want to ensure is that it is part of whatever draft bill emerges from further deliberations on how we fix a system that's not working. This motion asks officers to prepare a report for P and R setting out the specific steps needed to achieve this goal as soon as possible. Now, some honourable members will say that asking for a report is just bureaucratic obfuscation. I see nothing to lose, however. Since the Remembrancer has advised that no fresh legislation can be sent to Westminster until the Markets Bill has cleared objections, we'd be drawing up a plan to act as soon as the opportunity arose. Other honourable members have voiced concern that submitting new legislation to Parliament risks exposing the city to demands for other changes we might not want. Supporters of this motion, however, would argue that enhancing the accuracy of our democratic mandate can only strengthen us. By voting for this motion, this Honourable Court would show that the world's oldest municipal democracy is not just a guardian of tradition, but embraces common sense reform
Ms Bolton, thirty seconds please.
that enables democracy to do what it's meant to do, work efficiently, transparently, and for everyone. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Ms Bolton. Ms Mercy Hagerty to second the motion.
My Lord Mayor, at the heart of this proposal are two simple principles, democratic accountability and bringing the mechanisms of the city's electoral arrangements up to date with the rest of the country. It's about ensuring that everybody who wants to vote, who is eligible to vote, is able to. The ward that I'm very proud to represent, Cripplegate, is home to people who contribute to our community and should be heard at our elections. Yet, under our current system, many are excluded, not because they lack eligibility, but because they missed a once-a-year deadline. At both the Cripplegate and Aldersgate Ward Moats this year, residents brought the same motion, calling for an investigation into the city's electoral process, citing low turnout and uncontested seats. The change proposed today is one small step in listening to our electorate and answering those concerns. For me, the current impact of the arrangements on students is unacceptable. Students arrive mid-year, usually unaware of the rigid cutoff. By the time they're settled and engaged, it's too late, they're locked out of the democratic process for over a year. This is not just a technical flaw, it's a failure that actively excludes young people from participating in local democracy. Rolling registration would fix this. It would allow monthly updates to the electoral register, enabling new residents and students to be added in time to participate in local elections. It would make our systems more accurate, more inclusive, and more representative of the city as it actually is, not as it was fourteen months ago. There are coherent concerns which councillor Bolton has laid out. Any change to the city's electoral arrangements requires primary legislation, a private bill from the corporation, that demands some resource, consultation, and careful planning in a process that we could reasonably expect takes several years. But we have to begin that process, and rolling registration is the most obvious and sensible place to start, as recommended by city officers in their own report in March 2024. Some may argue that this change should be considered as part of a broader review, and I agree that a holistic approach to democratic accountability is required. But the rolling registration measure is simply about ensuring that those who already have the right to vote can actually exercise it. Others may raise cost or reputational risk, but the cost of exclusion is far greater, and the real reputational risk lies in being the only authority in England still operating a once-a-year register in 2025. This is a common sense-
Ms Hagerty, thirty seconds please.
This is a common sense, internally recommended step. It signals to our electorate the direction the city wishes to travel in. I'm very pleased to support this important motion.
Thank you, Ms Hagerty. The motion is now in play. Does any honourable member wish to discuss the motion? Deputy Henry Colthurst.
My Lord Mayor, I think this is an extremely sensible and logical motion. Certainly, my ward, since I was elected, we've been under development for more than fourteen years. I suspect during that period, at least twenty percent of our electorate has not been franchised during the course of the year. I think it's very sensible to bring us in line with the rest of the country, and I think we have plenty of time to repair, three years to prepare a bill as and when the Markets Bill goes through seems a sensible timeframe and gives us plenty of time to plan. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Ms Debra Oliver.
My Lord Mayor, I'd like to thank Leila Bolton and other new members for raising and supporting this motion. It reflects a shared commitment to improving transparency and legitimacy in the city's electoral system. This motion proposes a simple, practical improvement, maintaining a current and accurate list of worker and residential voters. In my own ward of Aldersgate, we've seen businesses move out yet retain voting rights despite no longer having a stake in local issues. That undermines the integrity of our elections. Rolling registration would ensure that those who work and live in the city today, not six months ago, are the ones who vote. It would also encourage greater participation, especially from newly eligible voters. Importantly, this motion does not create additional work for officers. It aligns with the planned franchise review and gives a clear signal that we want this issue addressed as part of that review. Let's modernise our system, let's make it more inclusive, responsive, and transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Oliver. Ms Sarah Gillinson.
My Lord Mayor, I'm delighted to speak in support of Leila and Mercy's motion, and I simply want to tell a story that I think illustrates the impact of the system that we've got at the moment. And it's a story about a group that's very close to my own heart, busy working families with young children. Now, when we were canvassing during election times, knocking on doors, one of, the busy working families were one of the groups that we all found were most engaged in talking about what they most wanted the city to do. They wanted to talk about schools and childcare and green spaces and line bikes, worried about knocking over their children, and they were all very willing to go out to vote. And in fact, I know just from amongst my acquaintances of four people who did go out to vote for the things that they really care about, and found that they couldn't, and that the reason they couldn't was that in amongst the craziness of day-to-day life, getting the kids to school, working, all of the rest of it, they'd just missed the life admin that meant that they had to tick the form once a year to say that they wanted to vote. So for me, the simple step of a rolling register that would simply eliminate that problem and enfranchise this group and many others as well at a single stroke is one that we should be indicating today our support for as a Court, and that is why I am asking you all to support this fantastic motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Gillinson. Deputy Nagat Kureshi.
My Lord Mayor, I am also rise in support of this motion today. It's indicative of us that we owe it to ourselves to bring ourselves into the 21st century, not at least to be able to showcase to the rest of the UK that we are not lagging behind. I really do have very physical evidence that happened during the election earlier this year in March, where there were voters on the voters' list but had actually left the Billingsgate Ward area, and yet had been brought back in at the election time. Now, this is absolutely deplorable, and this kind of practice really should cease to exist. It's not for one for me to have to remind everybody here that I was one of the wards that was heavily contested in March and won by landslide, but besides that, I would just like to remind the Court that this is a very, very well-deserved motion, and I am in full support. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy, and for the reminder, Deputy. Mr Jason Groves.
My Lord Mayor, I commend a lot of the ideas behind this motion. I think we all want to see better representation and more engagement with the city, and looking for ways to do that, I think, is to be commended. Nagat mentions a particular problem, and clearly we want to make sure that we are truly representative and we have voters that are able to represent us. We, of course, do, though, have a very unique franchise in the city, in that we have certain wards that are dedicated residential, and we have a large number of wards which have a majority of business voters. If we were to bring in rolling registration, it would change the number of wards, based on current boundaries at least, that are majority residential as opposed to a majority business, and that is something that I think we should do consciously, so not perhaps just sleepwalking into this. So I'm going to support this motion, that we look at rolling registration, and I look forward to that coming before Policy and Resources. And it should be, in my view, as Leila pointed out, this is not the only reform that we should be looking at. We should be looking at perhaps a whole series of reforms to look at the franchise. But we do need to remember that we do have a unique franchise in the city. So as part of an overall review of the franchise, I think it's right that we look at rolling registration, that we look at some of the issues that Nagat has raised, but we should be mindful of all the consequences that this move will entail as well, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Groves. Deputy James Thompson.
My Lord Mayor, I am also very supportive of the motion before us. The Policy Chairman confirmed just last month that rolling registration would fall within the scope of a franchise review. Moreover, in March 2024, a report titled City of London Corporation's Electoral System was agreed by your Policy and Resources Committee. That report noted that moving to a rolling register would be advantageous to registration and to increasing the size of the city's franchise, and members have already agreed to further scope options around this. As the Policy Chairman set out in our last meeting, a franchise review will commence once we've completed a boundary review. The first paper relating to that boundary review is due to be submitted to your Policy and Resources Committee this year. As noted, any change to the franchise will require primary legislation, and we can only reasonably approach Parliament once that approach, once, and that approach should encompass all changes we want to propose. If members are inclined to support rolling registration, and my sense is most members do, it should be just one element amongst other proposals. The motion before us calls for a report to be submitted to your Policy and Resources Committee to outline the necessary steps to achieve legislative change to introduce that rolling registration. Commitments have already been made to consider rolling registration as part of that wider franchise review, and I fully support the motion, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. Deputy Paul Martinelli. Thank you.
My Lord Mayor, again, thank you to the members for bringing this very important motion to us today. I do have just a couple of comments and concerns. I think it's very important that officers can guarantee us a greater accuracy in this process, because I think the concerns that I have is we'll have a bigger register which will be less accurate. You know that across the country, the accuracy of rolling electoral registers is only in the high eighty percent, and it's a problem we need to ensure against. I was interested by the issue raised about students moving into the area for three or four months after September, and concerned obviously for the workers who can't vote in the city with less than a year's employment with their employer, and are very much looking forward to this being part of the package where we look to one vote for each worker in the city as part of this package to court. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. Deputy Badush Gupta.
My Lord Mayor, I rise to support the motion before us today, and I'm delighted to associate myself with all the comments made before. Previously, I had one singular concern around rolling registration, and that was around the burden it would place on our corporate voters in maintaining somebody who had to deliver that rolling registration. I spoke to three of the largest voters in my ward, Lloyds Banking Group, Standard Chartered, and Legal and General, and they were all supportive and happy to deploy the resource to support rolling registration. I think that's very important in supporting this motion, that we believe that those corporate voters can support this motion, and they can, and so I'm delighted to support this motion today, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. Next, we have Deputy Tim Butcher.
My Lord Mayor, I don't want to take a different view, I'm going to take a different view. I'm perfectly in favour of rolling registers, but I'm not in favour of the motion. I oppose the motion because it resolves to bring forward a report just on this matter. Perhaps we need, as was pointed out by the Deputy of Policy and Resources, a comprehensive report, and this is about picking out one- report, and this is about picking out one particular issue. The report will cost money to produce, it may be out of date for the time that there is parliamentary time available, which could be two years or more. This report, my Lord Mayor, will gather dust. I would rather spend the money to keep our streets clean, and I urge honourable members to oppose this motion.
Thank you, Deputy. Next, we have Alderman Greg Jones.
My Lord Mayor, I support this motion, but I just want to pick up on a point the Deputy Chair of Policy made, referring back to the Chair of Policy's speech at the last meeting. I wish to reinforce my support for a rolling register, but on the condition that the question of franchise is dealt with first before boundary review. It's a point that others made in this House at the last meeting, including Edward Lord of my ward. And I'm afraid I didn't find the answer that franchise review requires parliamentary approval, any answer to the illogicality of setting boundaries first before you know the electorate. If we really believe in democracy, we should do it in the opposite order, and I would urge the Chair of Policy through the deputy to revisit the position, because I don't support and I cannot see any democratic justification for fixing boundaries before you know the electorate. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Deputy Maryanne Fredericks.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I support this motion. The democratic right to vote is one that's hard fought for, and we should be doing everything to facilitate that. Currently, we have the registration once a year, which is a huge resource on staff who are trying to reach businesses and residents at a particular snapshot in time. And sometimes resources can be focused in different areas, which will mean that some wards aren't actually getting all the business electors that they're entitled to have on their list signed up. I think it's a much easier way if we have a rolling registration, and especially for residents, to ensure that when they move into the city, they can exercise their democratic rights as soon as they're able to if there's a by-election. So I will support this, and in terms of the court being sovereign, I think the court is clearly laying out to Policy and Resources that it expects to see a report coming back. And whilst it might gather dust, it can always be refreshed. It's much easier to refresh something than to start from scratch. So I would hope that this is voted for, that we show that we are democratic, and we are looking out for our voters' interests by making it easier and far more democratic for them to join our voting list and vote, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. Any other member wish to speak on this item? Mr Lawrence.
My Lord Mayor, if we're going to look at a franchise review, let's have a proper review, not just one issue. Because more importantly, and I'm not against having a review completely, but what is more important is perhaps we should look at as well, and make sure it's included in the review, every worker in the city gets the vote, every worker, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Lawrence. Ms Jenner.
My Lord Mayor, I don't have too much to say about this, other than I strongly support this motion, and I'd like to remind all our colleagues that our corporate plan quite clearly says that we actively promote participation in our democratic process. This is a first step and a very important step. This is published, we've told the world, let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Jenner. Mr Anthony Manchester, thank you.
My Lord, thank you. I'm just standing up to speak in favour of the motion. I agree with the comments that have been made, that actively supporting participation is something that we need to be proactively doing, and I'm concerned that while there are further reviews and other considerations that could be taken account of, we won't take this opportunity to move forwards with aligning with the rest of the country's practice in this area while that happens. So I'm supportive of moving ahead now with rolling registration while we can and reviewing the wider franchise later.
Thank you, Mr Manchester. Next, Deputy Christopher Bowden.
My Lord Mayor, I support the principle of this motion, but I think that there have been some misunderstandings about what rolling registration actually means, and it will not mean a reduction in the amount of work that our electoral services department has to do. In fact, our electoral services department already operates rolling registration for parliamentary elections and for referendums, but the process of rolling registration does require legally an annual full canvas to take place, just as we do now for our ward lists. It is an additional task then, in most months, to add to or subtract from the register under rolling registration. So I just wanted to make sure that members of this Honourable Court were aware that this is not going to be something which will actually reduce the workload, but it will increase the workload of electoral services. And despite that, I still think it's a good idea, because it will mean that the register is more up to date, but I don't want anyone to be under the misapprehension that this is going to make the lives of our electoral services officers any easier than they currently are. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. Any other member wish to speak on this item? If not, Ms Bolton to reply and close the debate. Thank you.
My Lord Mayor, I'd like to begin by thanking honourable members for their thoughtful contributions this afternoon. The strength of feeling shown in this debate reminds us that what's at stake here is nothing less than the credibility of our democratic foundations. At its heart, this motion is very simple. It asks that our electoral list reflect as accurately as possible who actually lives and works in the city at any given moment. This will help us better engage with constituents so that more men and women in the city understand what we do, participate in our elections, and even consider standing in them. Some members may be comfortable with the current system, but nobody can be happy with the fact that half our elections were not contested in 2025. This isn't revolution, it's modernisation. And as many members have said before, this is one element of whatever reform package comes, but we want to guarantee that this item will be in the mix. At present, businesses are asked to respond by November 30 to one big electoral canvas. One-fifth of the entries on the list I was given last month to help electoral services chase down responses in Bassashaw were already out of date. A few months later, the city sends companies another survey, known as the Business Survey, collecting similar information for tax collection and various other city programmes. And as I said before, if nothing changes in the electoral lists of a company, they would have nothing that they would have to do. So it's not the case that they would have to update their list once a month. And it's precisely because there will be reviews that we as a court should express a clear view now. By passing this motion, we're not preempting the review, we're guiding it. Honourable members, unless we intend to preserve our franchise arrangements in aspect for the rest of time, we must accept that reform will come sooner or later. A further question raised is that rolling registration might make ward lists less stable or include too many transient voters. In reality, it's the current system that causes distortion. Staff at a company that takes up premises on the 2nd of September 2028, just one day after the cut-off date to register, wouldn't be able to vote in the March 2029 elections. Meanwhile, a firm that moved out long ago could still have electors able to vote in those elections. That cannot be right, nor should we pick and choose who our voters are, whether students, residents or workers. Honourable members, this motion is not a leap into the unknown, it's a call for common sense to keep our democracy current, credible and connected to the people it serves. Let's take this step together and show we don't fear the future but are ready for it. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
And thank you, Ms Bolton. The motion before you members then is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. We move to item 14, where the right Honourable, the Lord Mayor, has received notice of one question. Ms Tana Adkin to ask a question of the Chairman of the Community and Children's Services Committee. Ms Adkin.
My Lord Mayor, would the Chair of the Community and Children's Services Committee confirm whether the city will be making a winter fuel type payment to all residents on the Golden Lane estate this winter to compensate them for the dilapidated windows and air leaks likely to increase their energy costs?
Thank you, Ms Adkin. Chairman.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I thank the Honourable Member for notice of the question. Golden Lane estate is home to more than 650 residents, and the estate itself is Grade II listed. The plan for Golden Lane estate is now finally progressing as a strong, deliverable, 10-year renewal plan after many years of delay. As a result of these delays, I recognise the need to support Golden Lane residents as they are now living with ineffective windows. Consequently, officers have reviewed a number of measures that will go some way to address these. Already, temporary improvements are being made on the poorest windows at Crescent House, and we will provide door curtains for those who request them, and importantly, to specifically answer your question, we have considered the cost of heating over the winter period. We know that fuel bills are a pressure for people, and therefore work has been undertaken together with the Climate Action Team to assess the impact of window quality on heating bills. A report of this was to be presented to the Community and Children's Services Committee. However, because of the importance of this matter and the importance of timing, I and the Deputy Chair of CCS have agreed under urgency a winter fuel payment for Golden Lane residents. This is for all residents on Golden Lane estate, leaseholders and tenants, and will be a positive contribution to the cost of people's energy bills. It will be offered to residents as credits applied to rent and service charges over the five months of the winter period. At this point, it's been agreed for the coming two years, however, that can be reviewed. The calculations are a contribution to overall bills and are based on a benchmarked average. We cannot address individual circumstances. It's specific to Golden Lane because of the length of delays, the very poor condition of the windows and the time it will take to deliver the programme. The amount will be for five months and will range between £40 a month for a one-bedroom or bedsit and £60 for a three-bedroom apartment. This is a £200 to £300 as a contribution to fuel bills. However, Great Arthur House is slightly different and will be offered £100 as the majority of their windows have already been replaced. We have a plan for social housing.
Chairman, 30 seconds, please.
And that is starting to work. I hope you will see that this is an example of the consideration we're giving to our residents in Golden Lane estate. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms Adkin, would you like to ask a supplementary question?
No supplementary, but may I thank the Chair for her answer?
Thanks to Ms Adkin for your question. Alderwoman Liz King.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Chair of Community and Children's Services for her answer. I think it is important that this Honourable Court understands that it is following the Golden Lane Estate Residence Liaison Group last week, attended by Deputy Carrie Wilkins and councillor Dawn Frampton, who then followed up regarding the winter fuel payments, and they have now received the reassurances that the Chair of CCS was able to give us today, that the support will be in place. And it would be nice to have known of this question in advance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Mr Munzer Ali.
My Lord Mayor, I very much appreciate this question, but I want to remind the Court and the Chair of Community and Children's Services that a similar question was raised by myself in terms of winter fuel payment and in our ward in Port Soken. Not only do we have a housing estate belonging to the City of London with lots of repairs and mould issues and issues of similar nature, but also the Guinness estate, which used to be part of Tower Hamlets up until 1994, and our neighbouring boroughs have a very wide appeal and service in terms of the winter fuel payment, which a lot of residents have requested in my ward. So my questions specifically are as follows. One is to be very clear about the winter fuel payment and support for people all throughout the city, i.e. residents, especially vulnerable people in my ward. And secondly, make that widely available, the information, because that was one of the largest problems last time, and there was a lot of confusion in terms of winter fuel payment and processes, especially in a ward like Port Soken, where a lot of people do not speak English as a first language as well. So I would really like some responses back on that. Thank you very much, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Ali. And apologies to Alderwoman Liz King. I should have asked the Chairman whether he wanted to respond to the Alderwoman's comments. So maybe an opportunity, Chairman, to respond to Alderwoman Liz King and then Mr Ali. Thank you.
Thank you very much, my Lord Mayor. Yes, to respond to Alderwoman, my apologies, King. It is absolutely true to say that the Cripplegate members have been very forthright in the comments that they have been making about the powerless state of Golden Lane, and I thank them for that. I know that some of the Cripplegate members are also residents of the estate, and so they feel it very acutely on a day-by-day basis, there are residents who talk to them about these issues, and I'm therefore very pleased that on this occasion we're able to respond very positively, and thank you for all of the work that you have been doing. And please continue. With respect to the Port Soken ward, as members will appreciate, the Mantle Street estate, which is Guinness estate, is not the responsibility of City of London. And I think we've said here before that where it is possible, we make contact with the managers and the officers in the Guinness Housing Association, I think I might be miscalling it as an association, however, with the Guinness Agency responsible for Mantle Street. We cannot take on responsibilities for another organisation, however, we can bring pressure to bear on the issues that are brought to us as a result of residents in that area. So far as Middlesex Street is concerned, there have been a number of improvements already made on that estate. That estate is not included in this because there are very, very specific issues to Golden Lane that do not apply to other parts of our social housing estate. That includes Middlesex Street and those estates that are outside the City of London boundaries, for which we are responsible. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Deputy Maryanne Fredericks.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Thank the Chair, and you've partially answered my question when you said that this is specific to the Golden Lane estates and not those outside the City of London or Middlesex Street. But have we got a published criteria or rationale for that, for transparency? Because I'm sure there'll be residents who would be watching on estates outside the city, which we maintain, and due to delays in projects, they might be suffering the similar consequences of high fuel bills and other issues. So in terms of transparency, are you going to clearly define why the Golden Lane is getting that funding? getting that funding? And at what point would this money be available to other estates if they reach that benchmark? Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. Chairman.
Thank you, and thank you very much for the supplementary question. As I said in my main response, the calculation was based on comparatives, and it was led by the Climate Action Team, particularly looking at the EPC of the estate. So there were very clear criteria. I can ask our Climate Action colleagues and the officers from the Housing Department to share that with all members if that is interest. Should other estates for whom we are responsible reach a similar state, then we would have an obligation to look at that as well, using exactly the same criteria of the EPC. But I am assured that there are none in the same condition as Golden Lane Estate and at the moment would not meet the EPC criteria and the recommendations of Climate Action Team. So we can always review this. The Housing Subcommittee can always review this and make a recommendation to CCS. But on current information, it's not extended beyond Golden Lane Estate.
Thank you, Chairman. Any other member? We finished? We're all clear? In which case, we shall proceed. Thank you. At item 15, on page 75, is a report on measures introduced into Parliament which might have an effect on the city corporation this is to receive. At item 16, there were no ballots taken at the last court. At item 17, there are no resolutions. 18, no report. Item 19, there are no dockets for the seal. At item 20 is the motion to exclude the public. The Right Honourable, the Lord Mayor, has been informed of several matters for consideration after the public have withdrawn from the meeting, and the Chief Commissar has placed a motion on the summons to exclude the public whilst these items are considered. Is the motion to exclude the public seconded? The Chairman of the Finance Committee.
My Lord Mayor, I second the motion.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, that is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. Will members of the public and officers in the public gallery kindly withdraw? And could the live stream please now be ended?